I'd like to go ahead and call our March 5th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. And before we go on, I'd just like to mention, this past month Betty Jo Wolf passed away. She was one of Fairhope's stalwart business people that back when Fairhope had a lot of vacancies and people were saying you couldn't make it in downtown Fairhope, you had Betty Jo Wolf at the Page &amp; Pallet, and her son had the frame shop, you had Fairhope Hardware, Fairhope Pharmacy, and Bed, Hole &amp; Wind, the main shops in downtown Fairhope, and everybody telling them, "Y'all need to move out to shopping centers." And it shows you how much time's changed. And she stayed in that building and kept it looking nice and was kind of one of the behind-the-scenes leaders in Fairhope there. But wanted to mention that. Wanted to, first of all, before we go any further, we have two sets of minutes to approve. I guess, first of all, the January 4th minutes, are there any corrections that need to be made to those if not all accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Second set of minutes, February 5th. Any questions or changes or concerns on those, if not all accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 5th minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
No, I said aye. Oh, I have to abstain. Excuse me. I read them.
All right. First item on the agenda, ZC 1802 has been, do we need to make a motion to postpone that, or has it just been?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has requested this item be continued to a future meeting, and no action is required by the commission. It does have to appear on the agenda because at the last meeting it was tabled, but no action required by the commission at this time.
Perfect. Thank you, Buford. All right. Next item on the agenda, ZC 1803, public hearing to consider a request of Dewberry Preblewish to establish, well, I guess we've got a change in the PUD that they're requesting for the Village of Firethorn.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to amend the Village of Firethorn PUD. This amendment to the PUD is the inclusion of 6.28 acres for a total of 23 lots. It's sort of in the rear of the development. As you know, Firethorn's a relatively new development. They're building out now, I believe, right now it's at, it's in the beginning stages of its development. Mr. Chairman, I'll take about 30 minutes to go through the compatibility analysis, if that's okay. Well, I'm kidding.
I remember Buford's from last time. Anybody remembers that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be brief on that. I will tell you, we did, as your packet indicates, we went into great detail with the compatibility analysis. And I will tell you, in the future meetings, we won't go into such detail. It's more of an educational thing to make sure everybody understands. In the future, we won't be going through those. We'll be kind of cutting that down a little bit. I know you're very busy and it takes a lot of time to read that, so we'll be going more towards chart format, so just give you a heads-up for the next meetings. But we did on this one, just to go through the detail. We looked, this is an amendment to an existing PUD. If you look at the, just the development that we have before, it's being, the part that's being included, it's 6.2 acres on, and it's going to be 23 lots, which carries a density of 3.66 per acre. The existing Firethorn development is 1.8 units per acre. We looked at this as a continuation of the Firethorn PUD, so we looked at the whole together. And when you include the 6.2 acres into the existing Firethorn PUD, the total density for the development is 1.88. So it moves it from existing 1.8 to 1.88. And so, we looked at that from the macro level, that's what we're looking at. The density's being increased just a little bit, because it is a PUD amendment to add to the existing development. When you look at the micro level, this project within Firethorn, there are, we looked at that, and there are some mitigating factors here, we believe. As you can see from your site plan, the PUD is on one side, I believe it's the east side, you've got the Quell Creek Golf Course, which is an open space, so there's no abutting neighbors, no abutting neighbors that are residential there. You do have the golf course there in the green space of the golf course. If you look to the north of the property, you do have a common area and a retention pond, creating a buffer or a barrier between existing platted lots to this property. If you look to the south, you've got a 60-foot wide power line easement, and also there's wetlands there. And so, that creates a physical barrier, barrier on the south. That taken together with the density, we feel like is, makes this a compatible development, and staff does recommend approval of this. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Wayne. I'll go ahead and see if anybody from, would anybody on behalf of the developer wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Steve Puffrey of Dewberry, so I'll also be here to answer any questions you have. We, we're hoping that you agree with what Wayne's talking about. We feel like this is somewhat a pocket area, if you will. The developer actually purchased this property when he was doing Firethorn, because he needed the drainage to be able to get to off-site. We had to go through this property, so we ended up getting the property anyway for drainage purposes. And, and that's all the way to the west side of this property, and it's still there, of course, and we've allowed for that. But, but we feel like this is a, a pocket that, that the developer would like to do a little different product in the PUD, and as you know, in PUDs generally, it was a little bit different on this project, because we didn't really have a mixed use at all in this project. All the lots were relatively large lots. When I say large, 100 by 150. So this gives a little different product. It's a little pocket area that we're going to keep that way, and with all of the surrounding open space around it, we're hoping that that gives it somewhat a little ambience of being a little community of its own. And, so, I could go in a lot more detail. I'd rather you ask me the questions you've got and let me focus on that, instead of going 30 minutes long, too. So I won't do that.
I think I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay.
They'll call you back.
I'll come back up.
At this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this item?
I did not have anyone signed up, but I did provide a letter that I received today.
All right. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll turn the meeting over to the commissioners.
Wayne, this idea of a continuation of a PUD raises an interesting question. A PUD is approved now, but say nothing happens on it for X years. At what point do we decide that the conditions might have changed so that the original PUD would have to be re-looked at, at least if it was going to be built out? Is there any timeframe on that, or just a matter of Kentucky windage on that?
Well, with this one, you know, you do have plating that went on, so it's been effectuated. It's been enacted upon. I don't think we have any timelines in our ordinance if, if you have a development that doesn't, say they get a PUD and they don't, they don't carry it out within a certain period of time. I don't think we have anything that reverts back. That's very common. That's something that we can certainly look at from the staff level. I know back in the mid 2000s, 2005 and '06, you had a lot of developments that were approved, PUDs that were approved, that were dormant, and in some cases, those site plan approvals expired. And in some cases, it would revert back to the original zoning. Now, in Alabama law, I believe you have, I defer to Ken on this, if, to revert zoning back, it has to be another public hearing. It doesn't have, you can't do it automatically, is my understanding. But the site plan approval with a PUD can expire. And so, that, the site plan that's been agreed upon, that's been approved, can expire, the zoning cannot. So that makes sense.
Somebody might be stockpiling PUDs, you know, getting them now and as well. At some point, I'll get to use this, and maybe five years from now, we think, maybe we should have thought about this in a different context.
Right. And that, that's a great point. I think that's something we could look at in our ordinance. That'd be a...
...of change of our infrastructure and everything that, did we never put a cap on?
We have not. It was discussed.
Now, you know, when you have a PUD, I mean, basically, most of those are triggered by start of construction. So, I mean, to say you have to build out within a certain period of time was, is not a good idea, because the build-out is, depending on a lot of different factors that can change. Now, to start construction, there's language that we, that we could use that would define the start of construction, which would then trigger that PUD to make it become effective from that point forward. So there's some things you can do. But having one that's, that's approved and that sits there, and there's nothing done out there, I think that's something we should look at and we can evaluate. And we'll be glad to bring something back to the, to the planning commission for your consideration that would help address that question.
Well, the, one thing that y'all were talking about, and I don't, I'm remiss to have not asked where we are on that, is the one item that, where on rezonings, we're going to require basically kind of a...
Site plan, right.
...plan on that.
That is going through the system. I mean, the planning commission's passed it. It is heading to the city council. We're getting some dates now to bring it forward, but that is still on track. It is still moving forward. And so, so it'll, it'll be before the city council shortly.
Because that would address this, and suppose as a zoning, that would really, that really addresses this correctly, doesn't it?
Right. Yeah, we have the site plan approval process that we're talking about. We also have the pre, the pre-application meetings and all that language. It's also moving through the system as well.
Those should be heard at the April city council meeting, the first one.
And I just have one question, and this is not, dealing with this specifically, but I noticed in this radius, on page number six, it shows Stone Creek at 1.49 units an acre, Firethorn 1.8, Quell Creek is at .85, but it says, you know, 4.15 allowable, even though, you know, you've got the golf course going through it. And then unzoned, it says 2.9 acres are allowable. But I'm just thinking, you know, looking back at the litmus test that we gave to Sawgrass, you know, that was unzoned, and we weren't comparing that to what was allowable on the unzoned. We compared it to what was there. So my question is, are we going to compare it to what's there, or what's allowable?
And I'll defer to Buford. Buford did a lot of analysis on this, and I'll let him...
Because I think we need consistency either way.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, if we're going to do it to what's allowable, then, you know, Sawgrass needs to be looked at in a different light. If we're going to do it to what's there, then I think Firethorn needs to be looked at in a different light.
Right. I do think that we have been consistent, but I'll let Buford go to the details on that.
Mr. Chairman, answer that question.
Turn your mic on, Buford. Is it on? Okay.
If my mic is on, everyone can hear me, okay. And so, Mr. Chairman, answer that question. When we look at the unzoned properties, we'll, we'll carefully examine the zoned properties. And so, in this case, pretty much everything that's unzoned is undeveloped, is heavily forested, undeveloped, or, from the best we can determine, may have some single-family residences on it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. But if we see a parcel, if we see a parcel that appears to function as a zoning district, so if we see multiple units, then we'll isolate that parcel and give it, and give it a units-per-acre count. And give it a units-per-acre count. So, and when you see Twin Beach Estates come back, and it'll most likely be in a chart form, maybe a little bit easier to follow than what we have right now, you'll see that. So we see, we see a series of parcels or a series of parcels that have lots of units on it, we'll model that. So for example, when we look at Twin Beach Estates, when it comes back, one of its adjoining properties is a trailer park. So we will actually count the number of units and get you a unit-per-acre count of how it functions. Now, that's zoned, obviously, but we'll model it that way. So we'll do our damnedest to model this as accurately as possible as what's there in the field.
And Buford, if we have a vacant parcel, unzoned, in the county, can you describe how, how we go about estimating the development potential of that property?
So we look at its development, its development potential, and based upon our subdivision regulations and our zoning ordinance. So if we have an unzoned, undeveloped piece of property, it's within our planning jurisdiction, but it is unzoned in the county, the subdivision regulations require that that have a lot square footage of at least 15,000 square feet. So if you take one acre at 43,560 square feet, divide it by 15,000 square feet, that gives you approximately 2.9 units per acre, which is what it would be allowable to be developed. So we take what our regulation requires, and that is what it's allowable. Now, the allowable does not take into account the realities of right-of-way, open space, et cetera. But it does give you the most conservative high number on what is allowable.
Good answer. Thank you. All right. Any questions?
I have one comment. It may be a question at the end, but it's a comment for sure. It looks to me like there's no connectivity on the property that's, uh-oh.
Oh, sorry.
The Stone Creek PUD, and then the unzoned property, it looks like there may be some type of headwaters that kind of separates that.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, you know...
But it looks like all the dense development for Firethorn is at the very end of the road versus what I would think you would want to have the denser stuff at the beginning of the road. Is that fair, or is that...
Well, you know, this is 3.66 compared to 1.8. So I mean, the density's not that big of a factor. You've got 26 or 23 lots, I think. I don't know if that's that, that big of a factor there. As far as the connectivity to Stone Creek from this property, as I mentioned before, there's a 60-foot power line easement and also wetlands, I believe, that are back there, which would make it difficult to construct it. I mean, it could be done, I suppose, but it'd be very difficult to construct a road through there. But Richard, I think from a typical standpoint, if we were starting anew, you know, you would, you would probably want to, if you had, say, apartment complexes, you had 12 units an acre, or 16 units an acre, I mean, obviously, you'd want to put that, that density near, near a major intersection, a major highway. When I look at 1.88 compared to 3.66, I don't know if that's, if that's a density gradient that would, that would probably warrant something like that. I mean, obviously, if you had, you know...
Or at least closer to the common area.
Something a lot denser, you probably, that probably would be a valid...
Yeah, the connectivity part of it was as odd to me as any of it, though. I mean, that was...
Yep. And I will tell you, Steve mentioned this parcel will have, is a drainage connection. When we, if it does gain approval and they go through with a plat, it'll be reviewed according to sub regs, and the drainage will be looked at very, very carefully by our staff, and, and I think, I don't have any concerns with that. I know that we'll look at it and ensure that it'll meet our requirements.
I have a question. Mr. Dewberry, do you know what the size, square footage would be on these homes? Just trying to get a vision of what we're looking at.
You're the second person in about a month that's called me Mr. Dewberry, and Mr. Dewberry would probably be very offended.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to be Mr. Dewberry. I wouldn't be here tonight.
Well, I know you're Steve at the front.
Wouldn't be here. All right. I'm sorry. You lost when you called me Dewberry. So what were, if you will ask me again...
The size, square footage of a home built on this size lot?
We actually submitted some plans on that. They, I think these homes run in the neighborhood of 1,800 to 2,400 square feet, and they're one-story.
So we're going to be clearing a lot of the trees?
Well, we did turn in a tree plan with it, and right now, the only thing we proposed is, and a lot of, some of the trees are literally on the backside of the property. There obviously will be some taken out in there, but we're going to, we've already submitted something and tried to preserve as many of the trees as, as that we could. But you're right, due to the size of the lots, these are going to take out a few more.
Okay.
Can I ask you, to the earlier phases, we did, in one of the earlier phases, I guess, further along with the golf course, they did do what the reservation program on the back of one.
Oh, okay.
And back, I don't get away from what Wayne was saying, just so that you also know, this development has been ongoing. It's not one of those, if they got started and have been sitting on, most of you probably know that this has been a, just about every time they finish a phase, they go to the next. In fact, if I can get the work done in time, my plan is to bring actually five, Phase Five and Six to you, submit it next month for preliminary plat approval. So it's, they're being pretty aggressive on this site, and so this actually falls in to, to go right in with the, and be completed fairly soon.
Any further questions, if not all entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is a recommendation to city council, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I would make a motion on the case ZC 18.03, the Village of Firethorn PUD, that we make a recommendation to city council to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Next item on the agenda is SD 1806, a two-lot minor subdivision.
So this is a two-lot minor subdivision. Public hearing to request of Dewberry Preblewish for a plat approval of Kendrick Place, a two-lot minor. It's located on the west side of Bayview Street, directly across from Atkinson Lane. The authorized agent is, just kidding, Steve Pumphrey. And the total tract is approximately 2.8 acres. Lot one is 1.4 acres, and lot two is approximately 1.49. This particular parcel is owned by Thomas Hospital Foundation. And what we saw, there are a couple of things that we added to the conditions of approval, one of which was the, we recommended approval of the sidewalk exemption. In this particular case, there is a road that runs alongside of one of the lots that provides some access. At the Road of Bayview, there is no sidewalk to connect to. So that was one item. The, also, the second item was the director of operations recommends the applicant be responsible for the cost of water and sewer to the additional lot, as there is some road cutting and some additional expense getting the service to the new lot. Richard probably can talk to that, to you about that. And on the flow model, there were some just items, like, when they presented it, for some reason, the engineer did not sign it, which we typically require the engineer to sign the flow model. And also, they did not include engineer recommendations, so if there were any, they need to include those. And then the final item is a utility easement. Our electric department requested there be a utility easement down between the two lots. And so they have already adjusted the easement on the plat. So that's been done. But the other three are not completed.
Would anybody here wish to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Steve Pumphrey, again. We have no problem with any of those conditions. In fact, we've already added the utility easement to the plat, and due to the, and we can get the engineer sign off on the, on the fire flow test that was done. The fire flow test was lower than we would have liked, so what I did, and, and I think this goes with staff, I hope they will back me up on this, what we did, we increased the size setbacks, side setbacks on the lots from, instead of being 10 feet, we went to 16 feet to provide the space in between buildings that a low water pressure would require. So we accommodated for that. I've already put that on the plat. So I'll get the engineer to provide a sealed, sign and sealed test report. But other than that, unless you've got a question for me?
The kind of L, that's the existing driveway there, correct?
You talking about in the very back? I'm sorry, where are you talking about?
It's coming off of Bayview.
It's a, it's a drive, and there's a circle, like a rounded out...
That L, that's the actual, that's what's there now, right?
Right. It, it used to be a driveway that actually went to an existing structure on the, on the property.
Right.
I've walked the property. It's beautiful. Those oaks are magical. And I'm sorry that I called you, Mr. Dewberry. I know it's...
I almost want to say it's a compliment.
No, I know it's Steve Dewberry, and I was looking at you, and that's why I called you that. I'm so sorry. But I don't know if there's any preservation in those oaks, because they're, I don't know...
Well, we're not proposing anything. I mean, as far as construction-wise, it's, it, obviously, when one of the lots are bought, it'll be...
There is no residential tree.
Preservation, always look...
There's not, but, I mean, just to comment, just to pile on that comment, when you have a 72-inch diameter, I mean, they're, they're just amazing oaks there, and hopefully, you know, hopefully, whoever buys it will appreciate them. I wish there was a way, when you get to that kind of heritage tree, for us to preserve them somehow.
And, and from staff's perspective, if, if for some reason they were, they were going to build it and became a problem, we would, we would highly support any kind of variance to work around those, because those are very important to us. So we would certainly look favorably upon that in a variant situation for whatever means it is. We would certainly be encouraging that.
That, that was my only concern with increasing the side setbacks, which makes a lot of sense for fires. I would hate to squeeze somebody into a situation where they would encroach upon the trees.
I'll go with... Excuse me. The flood certificate, it's dated July 17th, 2007. Hasn't, you think it will come back with more recent standards than that?
I think I had, I hear it, look at that, that they did accommodate for the new flood zones, but I'll, I'll get that corrected. Steve, you can...
That property's so high, that's...
Property's 70-something feet above sea level.
Yeah, there's no bluff.
It's up on the bluff.
But I will say that there is...
Let me say this, though. We're saying, for old school, my house is 28 feet above sea level on the ground, and five feet above that. And because my property goes down to Cowpen Creek, and the, and they have never done a base flood elevation on Cowpen Creek, my, my insurance for my flood is $6,800 a month. In a world record rain of 43 inches in 24 hours, only brought the creek up 14 feet. So this property goes to the bottom of the bluff. So there are issues, that they may be required to buy flood insurance just because of the way these new laws are. It's very screwed up, and there are a lot of mistakes that need to be corrected on FEMA's part. So just because the house is going to be so high that no one better build up an ark...
Did you not do a base, just out of curiosity, you didn't do, did you do a base elevation on your house?
They do not have a base flood elevation for Cowpen Creek. So my house was three doors down on, on Fish River. My flood insurance would be $286.
Well, that's the way mine is on Mobile Bay.
But because I'm three doors up, and I don't have a base flood on Cowpen Creek like they do on Fish River, then I'm 6,800. So it's just, I'm, I'm just saying, these flood maps have a lot of tweaking that's going to be done in the next four or five years.
The new maps are not applicable until July at this point.
Just to clarify, the utility easement, I mean, it, it appears that it stops short of that, it just goes halfway into the property and that's it?
Right. They specified the length that they needed for the department. And I will say that Richard Johnson looked at the drainage. He said there's a lot of drainage that moves across this property, but he had the applicant add a note regarding that, so he was satisfied about that.
Is there enough right-of-way in the front for a sidewalk to be built to the later date?
There's no sidewalks on that, in that area.
Yeah, there's no, it's an existing neighborhood.
I understand, but the Single-Touch Corporation's talked numerous times about building a sidewalk through the Bayview Park, going up there, and has had plans on doing that a few times. You know, typically, there's been some neighborhood pushback, that people don't want the riffraff that sidewalks attract to come through there. But I was just wondering if there's...
It looks like there's 10, 10 or 15 feet just on the...
But that may be where the, you know, oaks are, and where would want to be cut anyway. But I was just wondering if the sidewalk's not being required, if, you know, maybe, you know, allowing right-of-way on the backside of the oak trees to build one if...
Oh, I know. I don't know about that. You're saying on the backside of the oaks.
Well, nobody wants a sidewalk to come through and cut those oaks down.
The oaks that kind of, a little further back, and then there's some larger ones that are the big, they're right in the middle of the lot. I, I wanted to ask a question, not to, but if I forget about it, about erosion on those lots. Do we put any kind of, implement anything on a homeowner to apply any kind of erosion maintenance?
We do, we do. We have erosion control standards that are implemented and, or followed up on. Kim Burmester does, does a good job with that, and also, as a project under construction, they'll be building inspections and so forth out there. So it'll, it'll be evaluated and be sort of monitored to ensure that there's no erosion and runoff.
But it wouldn't, it's, it's a little, it's an interesting situation. It's the bluff, but it's not a gully, so it's not like there's a water body setback.
Right.
So it just defaults to erosion control. There's no, there's no bluff protection.
We have no, no, no specific bluff standards or bluff protections or anything like that. It's just, it's, it's what it is right now, so...
We do have, in our...
We'll lie on, and see the city when it falls in, it's just like Spanish.
Just like California.
In our red soil and clay ordinance, there, there's a reference that they have to adhere to that, if it's in a coastal bluff area, so...
Okay.
That's about all we have.
Emily, is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, does anybody wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll close the public hearing and turn this portion of the leading over to the commissioners. Questions, comments, concerns, if not, I'll accept a motion.
All right, I'm going to drop the hook this time.
I'll second it.
I'd like to make a motion for case SD 18.06, Kendrick Place, that we approve this subdivision, minor subdivision, subject staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion, a second, any further? No further, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Moving along, we've got old and new business. Hey, Steve and John, one thing they're about to mention is March 14, we're having a community engagement meeting at the Giddens Conference Room in the library, love to have as, good, love to have as many engineers and folks there as possible.
I'll try to keep them away.
Mr. Dewberry, thank you very much.
Sorry. Bye, Steve.
See y'all later.
Lee, I want to abstain from this vote, because I'm on the board. I can tell you, he's been cut the hospital.
Honey, sugary baby.
Okay, assuming someone's noticed he's on the hospital board and noticed the ownership of that, which if he didn't glance, he would have missed, so, change his vote from this tension, please. All right, Wayne, anything else? We've got old business, SD 1731.
Yeah, we have, we have a plat extension, I'll ask Nancy to come in and explain that briefly, is a...
There's a plat extension, Paul.
Yes, for Camilla at the colony, Tim Lawley is here, and they just want to do a 180-day extension, instead of that, to allow for county permitting, construction of some minor improvements, city inspection approval, and that's...
Do I have a motion to extend the Camilla at the colony for 180 days?
So moved.
Motion, a second, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could mention the last thing on the agenda, as you mentioned just a few minutes ago, we are having a community engagement meeting with the development community and the public on March 14, at 3 o'clock, at the, again, at the Giddens Conference Room and the library. On our topics are five topics, the first one is, we have a, as you may know, we're very, very excited, we have now released our map viewer online, so you can look up zoning and so forth by name and et cetera, on our, online, it'll show you the zoning of the property and various other things. We're adding into this the planning jurisdiction, police jurisdiction, we'll be adding garbage collection area, I mean, garbage routes, and, I mean, those things and days of garbage collection, so we're going to be, this map viewer will be constantly being built upon in the future to provide as much information as we can to the public 24/7, so we're very excited about that. But the first item on our agenda at this, at the community engagement meeting is, we have someone here from the consultant who developed this map viewer to show us how to use it. It's got a lot of cool functions, and so we're excited about that, and they're going to show us a demonstration and show the public how to, how to use this map viewer, so it can be part of our process. Second thing we're going to be talking about is the LID standards, we may remember this from one of our discussions here at the council, at the Planning Commission, where we're going, be going over and discussing and taking comments on potentially new LID techniques and requirements, and we'll be doing that. The third thing we'll be talking about is the compatibility analysis, so if you're excited about that, you can come and listen to that. We'll be going kind of through, you know, how we do it, what, you know, the, the benefits, we're also putting together right now a white paper to explain the compatibility analysis to everyone, and also, how we, the benefits of it, what it is, how to do it, and then also some mitigation techniques you can, we can use to try to help with compatibility as well. We'll also be able to use the map viewer for this too, so anybody out in the public can kind of do their own, I mean, this is a very technical process, but with the current map viewer, we have the tools that are available to the public on the map viewer to also do their, their own compatibility analysis if they so choose, so we're excited about that. But this white paper we're going to be rolling out will have all that information, it'll kind of tell you the whole behind the, the intent of the, of the compatibility analysis and those kind of things, we're excited about that. The fourth item is, we're going to be discussing sidewalks and bonds. Bonds have been a bit of a issue, you know, they always are, what to bond, when to bond it, where to bond it, we, that ETJ areas, we're bonding, we're bonding things during the county and so forth, so we're going to have a discussion about that, hoping to get, get some comments back from the development community and others about the bonds and how they work, and then also, we're going to be discussing sidewalks, Richard Johnson will be here discussing sidewalks, when to put them in, when not to put them in, you know, the ADA compliance with sidewalks after the fact, and a lot of other issues that we've seen and we've encountered, so we're going to have a discussion about that and get comments, so, and maybe we can take some direction from that, and then propose some amendments to try to address some of those concerns in the process and the flow of how that happens. Then the last item, we'll, we'll be talking about utilities, and Richard Johnson, Richard Peterson will be here to talk about the utilities and the sewer, gravity sewer issues and those things that we've been, had, we've talked about recently, and just take some comments about that, and just discuss that in more detail.
Wayne, this is a, just a quick question, I get questions all the time about what's going on with the PUDs that we approved for 98, you know, the one with the trailer park and the one, I forget that has name, Fred something, I know that has one up there. Is there any way that we could get sort of an update occasionally, and whether anybody's coming in, doing anything, just...
We can, at the next Planning Commission, we'll be glad to make, give you an update on that, we can add it to new business, or old business, I guess, and we can get, get to give you a status report on that and tell you what, where is that, what's going on with those, and keep you up, up to date. You know, another part of the map viewer, which is coming in the future, it takes a little bit of detail, but the map viewer, we're going to also be able to locate current developments and be able, be able to attach the site plan and so forth, so people can go on the map viewer and see what's being proposed near them, or what's been approved near them until it's part of construction, and...
That's where I thought you were heading.
Yes, yes, and, and that takes a little more detail, a little more effort to get to that point, but that, with the map viewer, but we are, we're trying to take maybe steps with it, and so that'll be the next, next item that we'll, we'll address as we go forward with that.
Is this why we have to buy another module and another module to make it work?
Uh, no, it's not necessarily buying modules, it's, it's about getting the data together and, and defining the method of how to put it on there and so forth, so it's, it's coming, it's just going to take a little bit more time.
Thank you.
Yep, and the map viewer will also have a, have a backend to it, more of a private end that we use internally, utilities could use it, Public Works could use it, which is a more internal capability for us, so if you're, say you're in Public Works and you're looking at a storm drain, you'll be able to have your tablet out and be able to geolocate that and so forth, and really get much more technology-driven on how we do things, and, and let those guys make their job a lot more efficient, have a lot more information at their fingertips with, with utilities as well, so we're hoping this, this will be a, a tool that's accessible via the internet and a tablet, and make everybody's job a lot easier. But, but on, on the public end of it, it's more, it's a more of a public use tool, so people can see the zoning and see what's going on around them in their neighborhood.
Are any staff members going to the National Planning Association Convention in New Orleans, do you know?
I, I do not know, I have not planned on attending those. I usually go to some of the more smaller conferences, maybe some of the, there's, there's one that's in New Orleans that's been very good, it's a, the City Building Exchange, it's become a small group, but I tend to, you know, I don't, I haven't been in a while to the national conference, but, but we go to some of the smaller ones. And, you know, with, you know, budget constraints, I'd, I'd rather spend that money for every, all of us to be trained, rather than going, and a lot of times they're off in Las Vegas and places like that, and I just, I've, I've always felt like I'd rather use the money spending training, you know, on site, or, or, you know, go to closer conferences.
Sure. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Move. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
(inaudible).